Klansmen, salute the crowd!
We're here at a cross-elimination ceremony in Mississippi.
Wipe out!
Wipe out!
The white knights of Ku Klux Klan. They just came from a rally in Memphis, Tennessee. The point of the rally was to protest the changing of the name of Nathan Bedford Forrest Park. Nathan Bedford Forrest is the first Grand Wizard of the KKK.
Wipe out!
Wipe out!
What power?
Anybody who doesn't think the KKK is alive and well today in America, I encourage you to go to the woods in Mississippi and see for yourself.
Who is Nathan Bedford Forrest?
He was the first Grand Wizard of the Ku Klux Klan. He was a freedom fighter for the Southern cause, the cause of Southern independence, Confederate states of America.
Nathan Bedford Forrest was a racist. It's a symbol of a negative part of the past that many African-Americans in this community simply don't want and they don't like.
He was a very prominent man, a very wealthy man, and he was a self-made man.
He was another Adolf Hitler in my mind.
A hero for every member of the white race.
He's most remembered by me as being just one of the greatest Civil War generals we ever had.
He was a marauder, a murderer. At Fort Pillow, he executed hundreds of black soldiers, was one of the co-founders of one of the single worst domestic terrorist organizations in the history of the United States.
His bad kind of outweighed his good.
He's always been a revered figure in the Klan. You know, I looked up to Nathan Bedford Forrest as a general, but it does cause trouble in this city.
I arrived in Memphis six days before the scheduled Klan rally to reveal the hard truths about a city that has struggled with racism since it was founded in 1819. So we're here outside Lorraine Motel, which is where Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated. A lot of people are up in arms about this Klan rally due to its timing, which is a day away from Easter and five days away from the anniversary of his assassination. Seems pretty purposefully timed to me and outright disrespectful.
Young people in America, you need to realize that the schoolhouse is not going to teach you right from wrong. All they're gonna teach you is Black History Month and Mexican Month and all that. And then, Mama, don't open that. Ain't nobody talking to you. You stay over there. Nobody talking to you. I got an hour and I'm gonna be here for an hour. I got this part of me that you didn't get it.
Right.
Wipe out! What power? This is my order. I'm gonna take my order. Barack Obama cannot take our rights away from us. The black political machine is wanting to take away your monuments. Dig them up and move them, but it'll never happen. It'll never happen in America because we will stand tall for Nathan Bedford Forrest. And another thing, another thing, next time I get out at the gas station and I'm pumping my gas, I don't want to hear your Little John and your Triple Six and your Bohemian, I don't know what music. You live over in Africa where it came from. If it wasn't for the white man fighting for you, you'd still be picking cotton in the field. That's what you'd be doing. If it wasn't for the white man fighting for you, NAACP, Negroes, Ex-Alligators, Clues and Possums, which one are you?
Yeah, you come here, man. You come here. Watch your step. Forest City, let me find Forest City. You know what that is?
That's where the...
Klan was founded at.
Pulaski.
Yes, Pulaski, Tennessee. You know what that is?
Nope.
That's Chapel Hill, Tennessee. That was Nathan Bedford Forrest's boyhood home.
The reason that I joined the Ku Klux Klan of Mississippi is because I am tired of all of the blacks and all of the Mexicans think that they own America.
In Memphis, they want to rename one of the parks. What do you think about that?
I think that it's bull crap. I think that it's just a bunch of blacks that want to take all the white people's history away from them. And if they do it in Memphis, Tennessee, then they're gonna go to another state and they're gonna try it in another state and another state and another state and another state. And then that's when we all be in concentration camps. So be ready for it.
Do you feel that your rights as a white man are being taken away?
Oh, every day.
Can you give examples?
I mean, just like the Ole Miss deal, they done away with the Ole Miss mascot at Ole Miss. They took the Colonel Reb away and replaced it with a black bear. I mean, I can understand them changing the name because they said it hurts their recruiting at Ole Miss, but then they're gonna turn around and call it the Black Bears. Why not a white bear? Why did it have to be black?
Tonight, boys, we gonna kill us the Negroes.
And will you be at Saturday's rally?
More than likely. We'll see how things go. Call for rain, but we'll see what happens. Called for rain today, but we still was out there. The Ku Klux Klan is like the postal service. We, rain, shine, sleet or snow, we gonna be out there. Ain't no rain gonna stop me. So I'm gonna be out there.
And that's how you do it for fair and proud.
We gonna kill us the Negroes!
Alright!
This is the KKK. They gonna come to Memphis, Tennessee, in the middle of Black History Month, where Martin Luther King got gunned down. You're gonna come here and rally deep, really, really deep. In my language, just to talk. No, it's not gonna happen like that.
Shortly after the Klan's announcement that they were rallying in Memphis, local grape street Crips member Dwan Horton posted a video on YouTube in which he stated that he was forming an alliance of rival Memphis gangs to amass and show of force on the day of the rally.
When you come, we gonna have the biggest fucking rally you ever seen. World Star Hip Hop, Memphis, Tennessee.
We at this bit.
When I made the video, I just didn't see eye to eye with what they were saying about how they were gonna come down here so deep like that. And at this point, I really don't even care whatever they do. I just want to get my people together and it's gonna be bigger than just their rally. Even after their rally, which is Saturday on the 30th, I still want to keep us together and keep this movement going. There's all kind of gangs down here and we was gonna get all those different people who kill each other, Bloods, Crips, Gd's, Vice Lords. And if they can kill each other, I figure they can come together and do something positive. So I've been talking to all the different gangs, just not specific people. Like, he haven't made truces with enemies or nothing like that.
No, I didn't mean that.
I would like to, though. All my enemies, like, I love you. Like, anybody who think I don't like you, like, I like you a lot. I would like down there, I would like to get like a lot of weed and bring it down there to people and give it to them and make them smoke peace blunts. Like, blunts make people relax. She's my favorite. I named her Cobra because she's a Cobra.
He can't keep a gun. He trigger heavy. I shoot for him. So I just give him the guns. So people with licenses carry my guns for me, where I got the papers. So we are legal. So if you run up on us in public and you got a problem, then God be with you.
Good morning! Welcome, welcome, welcome! You know it's 10 o'clock and you know what time it is. It's time for you to come on into my office, stretch out on the couch, and let's talk about it. Today, we have a great one for you. The topic is the renaming of the parks. City Council decided that the parks were renamed after some people that they feel that has done some African-Americans bad in this community. Then there are some saying, man, that was history. It had nothing to do with that. But last time we had somebody protest called the KKK, it didn't go too good. And coming this Saturday, they're gonna be in Memphis protesting the fact that, hey, leave the name of them parks alone. We know what it represents to us and we feel it should not change. And there are some rumors that the gangs here in Memphis are gonna say, we're gonna keep the Klan at hand. Well, whichever way it goes, I'd like to know how do you feel about it?
Uh, Doc, uh, how many minutes I got to be talked about before we can hang up?
You got your 90 seconds?
But now, Doc, on my phone, Doc, it say I got 14 minutes. Doc, this one say I got 14 minutes.
But you ain't got 14 minutes, don't you? Come on, Bumblebee, get in and get it out.
I got to the point, I'm sorry, babe, I wanna say, I don't care nothing about their park. Keep their park right there.
That's how you feel? Alright, Bumblebee, I'm gonna keep it rolling. You got your second. Appreciate you, man. Gentlemen, let's not even put any hesitation to this. The founder of the Ku Klux Klan was Nathan Bedford Forrest, and they've named the park after... I think that's the biggest issue with some Memphians.
Well, that's part of the education that needs to occur because General Forrest was not the founder of the Ku Klux Klan. It existed for over a year before he allegedly ever got involved in it. So Forrest was not the founder of the Klan. And in fact, the Klan of the 1860s is very different from the Klan of today.
It's upsetting that, you know, people would attack history and try to erase history like this. It takes education to learn about somebody, you know, from 150 years in our past. And the more people know that they get educated about our past, the better off they are. When the Ku Klux was formed, they created it as a social club to start with. Tennessee at that time was ruled by just a tyrannical carpetbag governor, and he had tripled the taxes. And so these ex-Confederates thought that they had better do something about it. So they dressed up in sheets and curtains one night and ran him out of town. And they restored law and order to Pulaski, Tennessee. Well, this caught on and the town, the next town, did the same thing. They were also protecting the white and black farmers who were losing their land. So it wasn't an anti-black thing whatsoever in the 1860s. After it had gone on for over a year, the Klan had spread so widely that they needed someone who could really organize the Klan. And they voted in General Forrest as president of the Klan. At that same point, the Klan started turning violent. They were, some of the guys were taking the law into their own hands. And so Bedford Forrest ordered that the Klan be disbanded, and it was. So in 1869, the Ku Klux Klan disappeared.
And this was the initial...
This was the first, right, the first Klan. Then around the time of World War I, jobs were scarce, you had the Great Depression, and the white guys figured out that if you scared the black guys out of town, there'd be more jobs. Generally speaking, blacks are more scared of ghosts than other people. So it became an economic tool for the Klan to resurrect itself.
Is scare, is the word scare a bit, a bit...
Well, scare might be a little bit light.
Yeah, a little light, I would think.
Yes, yes. There may have been some lynchings then, but yeah, it was, that's where it first had gotten into little terrorist activities. And then the Klan disappeared by 1933 and was gone until the 1950s and 60s. Then when segregation came about, then the Third Klan arose. And they were specifically to fight black civil rights and to oppose federal intervention. And they really developed the scare tactics just to terrorize the black residents. And that's unfortunate Klan that we have today as more of the terrorist group.
Do you think the city council is engaging in revisionist history?
Oh, yes, I certainly do. They're trying to eliminate these three Civil War parks, which is part of American history, Memphis history certainly. And so it's certainly upon the shoulders of the city council that the Klan is coming to Memphis for a rally. And it's unfortunate because it's gonna give Memphis a further black eye.
It was the Memphis City Council who spearheaded the decision to change the name of Forrest Park. Two council members in particular, Janice Foley Love and Myron Lowry, were extremely vocal about the reasons for the renaming.
Why do we have to put up with what we have seen for decades and decades? That's just a reminder of how evil some people had been towards my people and other people. I marched with Dr. King back in 1968, got shot at by a Memphis police officer. The only thing that saved me, I had a hairpiece on my head and a big old hole was in it. And we don't need that. We are a progressive city. We're moving forward.
The decision to change these parks' names, I mean, is there any responsibility to bear on the council?
I take the blame. Even though I've got death threats, they gonna hang me, nigga, we gonna get you, fine.
Is that what the Klan's, they're calling you?
I don't know if it was the Klan. Somebody. Yeah, they were gonna kill, I was gonna be hung. I was, okay, so what? Hang me. But I'm still gonna stand for that, which is right, even if I stand by myself. But fortunately, there were 13, 12 others that stood with me.
I've referred to the Klan as a terrorist organization. In fact, I call them the American Taliban. Change produces controversy, and that's what we have in this case. People, many people, don't want to change. They want to live in the past with the memories that they have. Well, no one is trying to change history. We're only trying to add on to history.
Mr. Castro, U.S. Grant.
Nice to meet you, General Grant.
Want you to come in?
Yes, hello.
This is my wife, Julia. Julia, this is Mr. Rocco Castoro.
Good morning, sir.
Pleasure to meet you, Mrs. Grant.
Welcome to our home.
Thank you for having me.
Julia graciously agreed to join us briefly.
That's wonderful. Memphis is a weird but magical place and is apparently home to a wormhole that allowed me to travel back in time to meet Union General and former President Ulysses S. Grant, aka Dr. E.C. Fields, to get his opinion on the controversy.
Councilwoman Foley Love does not know her history, and that's someone who has the position, don't confuse me with the truth. I've got my mind made up. General Forrest, he was supportive of Negro-black rights. In fact, in 1875, he came out and said strongly that he felt that blacks should be admitted to the bar to practice law. He had earlier said that blacks should be able to go as far as their capabilities could take them. I never met General Forrest personally. I know something of his history that I may be able to tell you. General Forrest was a military genius. He was the only man in the Civil War, and indeed, the only man in history who rose from a private soldier to lieutenant general in the same war. His movements, his tactics, his efforts are still studied at the United States Military Academy. So General Forrest, to me, is exemplary of someone who was one of the most effective combat leaders in military history.
That's Chief. He's Chief Doug, so we call him Chief.
What will you be doing on Saturday when the rally is happening?
I will be here in the 21st century. I will be here on my deck looking at my ducks on the lake. I will place myself as far away as I possibly can from what's going on downtown. And I urge everyone to stay away from that. Don't give anybody, be it the Klan or the Crips, an audience.
Two days before the rally, I met back up with Dwan Horton and his fellow grape street Crips to see how their recruiting efforts were going.
About to go get up with some young fellas in the neighborhood, catch them outside just getting out of school. All of them, you know, some of them grown. Everybody been in a little trouble. Everybody do their own things as far as getting money and what they claiming. But I want them to come together and show them they wouldn't have to kill each other while you getting your money. That's one thing for sure, and you don't have to fear another black man.
They had gotten as far as setting up a name for their new gang mega-alliance, which they called DUI, Divine United International. As I rode with Dwan on a recruiting mission, I couldn't help but think that some people might find it confusing. You want to basically have these guys all be under the banner of DUI?
Yeah, but it's more of, not a banner. I don't know. I don't know the terminology I want to use. We're going to Hustle Town.
Hustle Town?
Yeah, it's Hustle Town. Yes, this place can be very dangerous. I know a couple people from over here been shot. And it's not so much that it's a poverty neighborhood, it's just the people in the neighborhood are just us, you know, hood people, and they're gonna act a certain way no matter where they are. Hello? Look, Eddie, you finna come to the hood code? We on the way now, nigga. Are you on the way now? IG. See, you know, we over here Eastside. You see my boy, no matter where we at, it's Eastside over here. Come on, T. Yeah, so, man, we can get this DUI out here, man. Divine United International. We trying to stop killing each other. How y'all feel about that? You know, it says DUI, but it's not DUI. We driving drunk enough. You know, we trying to come together. So the more people you know of me, because imagine you had all them connections, you would never have a problem. You get stranded somewhere, you can call anybody. We gonna bring everybody together, man. All the gangs and stuff like that, we gonna bring all that together. Yeah, man, positive. First event we get is gonna be Saturday at the KKK rally, and we gonna try to scoop everybody up and go down there just to show them know what I'm saying, that we don't want to hear none of that. Eastside, nigga. East Memphis was predominantly white at first, and like, it was real pretty. So they started moving black people out here and then it started looking a little different. And then, you know, so Eastside is where we holding down. Yeah, them I got right here, man. I'm gonna tell you about the DUI, man. We gonna come together. Everybody coming together, man. Divine United International. We want college boys, gang bangers, everything you can think of. You hear me? Eastside, nigga. They got my other guy. Eastside, eastside. Look at him, he spinning his fan. Eastside, eastside. We in there with the V, yeah, man. That's how we doing. Y'all hear about the rally?
KKK rally downtown.
What you feel about the KKK? What you feel about people destroying Memphis, your home city? Racial war? See how we can get together? We should be able to do this anywhere. White person with tattoos, black people with tattoos, it ain't nothing about the tattoos, about the color, man. You feel me? We should be able to travel without have to watch your back. You should be able to walk down your own street without have to watch your back.
I managed to arrange a last-minute, super-secret meeting with a man who would only refer to himself as Exalted Cyclops Edward, the same man who had announced the Klan rally to the local media. He wasn't shy about giving his opinions on race. White man and a black woman just rolled by on a four-wheeler. What do you feel about that?
That's disgusting. Stick with your own race.
So I imagine you're not so happy with our president?
Uh, no, not at all. Well, yeah, I'm very happy with him. You know, I got to say, he has made the Klan a lot stronger. That's the only thing good he's done. I think this is gonna be a larger rally than they've seen here in Memphis. There's so much media involved with it, with the gang members and all of that, that concerned it's gonna be a huge riot.
When you go to the rally, what are you gonna say to people? What is your...
We're not here for the black race, for the Mexican race. We're here because of the changing of our parks, and that's it. You won't hear the N-word coming out of anybody up there. You know, our Imperial Wizards already told everyone coming, do not use the N-word. We're here about our parks being changed, and that's it. We're an organization that tries to stand up for the white rights, and people so scared to stand up together. And we're trying to tell them, come out, you know, quit being worried about it, you know, and let's stand together and take over, you know, take back what is ours.
Come here. Stay out of the frame. Come here, come here, come back, come back. Gotta go.
Okay.
Robert, I just messed you up, man.
So I don't know what happened. I don't know if they were spooked by the four-wheeler again, but something's going on, and we probably get the fuck out of here. That's what my spider sense is telling me. What happened?
Uh, the guy on the four-wheeler?
Yeah.
Was questioning one of our guys up front.
Okay.
And then three cops pulled in and followed the guy on the four-wheeler in, so we didn't know, you know, what was going on.
Oh, wow.
You know, he come by with a black girl on the back. They come back with a white girl on the back.
Yep.
And I noticed he had a police radio on the front of the four-wheeler.
Oh, okay.
Let me tell you, the hiding behind the mask, you know, and the dog and all this, I mean, that's just part of them trying to put on a show. If they were who they would say they were, they're nonviolent, peaceful people. Why are they not right here in this park with their mask off talking to you today? At one time, I was white supremacist. I was a member of the Ku Klux Klan, and I came to a point in my life where I just changed. And that's where I am today. I'm a reformed racist and trying to end racism. The Klan, I'm gonna tell you, the Klan does not care one thing about the name of these parks. They do not care. The only reason they're here is because they're using it as a tool and an excuse to come here and cause trouble. I mean, they're coming here to protest the renaming of a park, and if you look at it, they're the reason that the park's being renamed.
Have you been threatened at all leading up to this rally?
Oh, yes, yes.
This is the little white knights trying to call you. Are you just a crackhead and can't afford to pay your bill and just go to your voicemail? The little white knights have set you straight. You don't like the rally? Tough shit.
I can handle the threats. I know I'm doing the right thing. I'm fighting for a cause that is really important, so it's really no concern.
The night before the rally, I attended a Unitarian church service that was called by over a dozen local pastors who had rallied their respective congregations to celebrate Memphis unity and pray that the city would persevere regardless of the outcome of the Klan rally.
You know, when we heard about the rally that's taking place tomorrow, it was, it's one of those things, what are you doing? And we felt prompted that we should have a protest rally. If there's going to be a Klan rally, then we're gonna have a protest.
Man, it can't be fixed politically. It can't be fixed financially. It can't be fixed educationally. But when you face something as big as what this city is facing tomorrow, we need divine intervention.
We curse division. We curse prejudice. We curse the ancient ruins that have tried to destroy a city, and we decree and we declare a win today.
The Klan, what they're doing, they don't represent Christianity, certainly. They don't represent really the vast majority of people. And we wanted, you know, I wanted my friends and my neighbors who would be hurt by what's going on to know that, you know, we're not afraid to stand with them and say, we don't agree with it and it's wrong.
What concerns do you have about what may happen tomorrow with the rally?
I'm praying for rain, and so, you know, I'm praying that it'll be rained out.
The next morning, it appeared that the churchgoers' prayers had been answered. A steady trickle of rain fell from the gray sky. The Klan was there, as well as counter-protesters from various anti-fascist groups from around the country.
Statue dedicated him remain at the park, and we raised it a man that it should be taken down immediately. If there was a statue of Adolf Hitler in central Berlin, it will come down. There's no way that's possible. And this man is a symbol of tyranny, murder, and lynching for the vast majority of this city.
There were also several hundred police officers from Memphis and surrounding areas dressed in full riot gear. It was clear that this time, unlike 1998, the cops weren't going to let the public, protesters, or Klan meet, or even within sight or earshot of each other. I was siphoned into a media pigpen, where the cops ignored everyone and stood around a lot. So we're in the press tent here. Can't really get a clear shot. They're not letting our second photographer in. Total media blackout, which is an interesting way to do things. For now, though, it's just complete wash all around, literally and figuratively.
Members of the Klan gathered during a steady rain in downtown Memphis along the old courthouse. Their protests sparked by the recent renaming of three Confederate-themed parks. Their number, though, around 60, far outnumbered by Memphis.
So, what are we doing here?
It's a good, it's a good day for a cold shout. Let's put it this way, nobody in government here, city or county, wanted these guys to have a huge success on their hands. They're honoring free speech, but they're not necessarily easing weight toward this particular kind of free speech. Whatever statement they want to make is not being made, no.
Dwan and the Crips, on the other hand, were nowhere to be found.
I'm on the way back now. I'm about five minutes from my house.
Five minutes away?
Yes, sir. Make it about six. I'm driving slow in the rain.
Rain was always a threat.
Yeah.
Now that it's here...
I mean, it'd be nice to take a stand, but what I got going, I think we can go with this, and we can not go to the rally because it's raining.
And, so you're not gonna go?
No, I'm not gonna go.
Not going?
Like, my mother, she was telling me that she had a bad feeling about it, and it was just staying on her, but, and then it started raining, so it was like, if it rained, I guess it wasn't meant for me to go down there, you know?
Yeah.
I'm glad, and I'm sure that if I don't go down there, nobody's gonna get hurt, hopefully.
I'm glad, and I'm sure that if I don't go down there, nobody's gonna get hurt, hopefully.
And if it stops raining, will you go?
Yes. I'm pretty sure they wasn't sitting around for me either.
Memphis kinda shuts down when it rains, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Good luck.
Same to you.
And stay safe.
Glad y'all still coming down here.
Yeah, yeah.
DUI.
After the rally, we traveled back to Mississippi to the Imperial Wizard's house. He had scheduled a cross-illumination ceremony, inviting all of the rally's attendees, including the skinheads and other white supremacists who had attended the event.
Mississippi. Ku Klux Klan is like fried chicken in Mississippi. It just goes hand in hand. You got fried chicken? And you get the Ku Klux Klan. Red is really not, in United Clans of America, red used to be like a titan. My last rank before I become Imperial Wizard was a Grand Dragon. Well, I had changed robes so many times, I decided just to keep the red. It's kinda like my trademark, man. Everybody knows me by that. I go to a rally and people be like, hey, that's him right there.
And how does it work, though, with like, how do you get, how do you move up through the ranks?
Uh, just work, hard work, and having a heart for it. Not everybody has a heart for it. There's a lot, the people that's out here tonight that drove for miles and miles and miles, they have a heart for it.
Where are you from? Where'd you come in from today?
Baltimore, Maryland.
Uh, how did you become involved with the Ku Klux Klan?
Uh, a couple months ago. My wife got fired from Walmart. I believed it to be a racial discrimination case, so I Googled white right, you know, lawyers, and there, you'll come up empty-handed, nothing exists. All I could find was the Ku Klux Klan.
Red. Do we hate black people? No, we don't hate black people. Do we hate homosexuals? No, we're against the sin. We're against race mixing in a way. It's not, we're not against people, we just wanna save people, that's what it is. We have a right to believe the way we want to, just like they have a right to believe the way they want to.
Klansmen, do you accept the light?
Klansmen, I accept the light.
You know, we've had two rallies back to back, different groups, but, I mean, the presence is definitely here. I mean, I think a lot of people are starting to realize, oh, they're coming back.
Was this one of the larger tournaments you've had for one of these illuminations?
It's one of the larger ones. I've been to bigger, but this was, it was pretty, they from different types of groups, not just Klansmen here tonight.
And were you happy with today's proceedings of the rally?
Very happy with the way everything went. I did that all for that man, that was for Nathan Bedford Forrest.
Klansmen, march! Klansmen, go! For God! Klansmen, Mississippi! For Nathan Bedford Forrest! For Nathan Bedford Forrest! Klansmen, of the Ku Klux Klan! For the Ku Klux Klan! Klansmen, a bro, grow!
Where do you see things going for the Klan in the next 10 years?
Nothing but growth. I believe that when Barack Obama was first elected to office, I believe people was like, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen here, I'm gonna wait and see. Now people are really upset about it, especially whites. I believe we're really fed up and tired of it.
Klansmen, salute, grow!
I just wanna thank everybody for coming down and supporting us in Memphis. I really appreciate it. I live in Memphis, I deal with them niggas every day. Thank y'all.
White power! White power! White power! White power! White power!
Let's pray that today made a difference in our lives. And Nathan Bedford Forrest, his name will still stay.
White power! White power!